Call the meeting to order in accordance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-80E, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the media area have been notified. Date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our chairman Mr. Govan followed by the pledge of Mr. Burry.
That's my head. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be here. God, we ask that you will direct and guide our path as we make decisions. Fellow, you're the best instance of our children and citizens of Darlington County. We ask God that you will give us traveling mercies as each of us return to our respective homes. This we asking your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a motion to approve the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' comments up there? All right, we'll move on from there. We have our consent items, a special call work session. Our next meeting will be March the 25th, 6:00 PM at the Darlington County Intervention Schools Media Center, and this will be a special called work session. We're going to be working on some contracts there, so that will be a special called there. Our next regular meeting will be held at Bay Road Elementary in their multipurpose building. Just as a reminder, we are doing renovations at the district office, and so we're going to be out traveling around the district with our meetings and work sessions over the next few months. So that will be at 6:00 at Bay Road. We have adult education missions. Can I get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move to reset the regulations.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? And then do we want to do the minutes together? We have January the 8th, January the 22nd, February the 12th, and February the 26th. Can we get a motion to approve all those at this point?
Certainly.
Yeah, let him make the motion.
You made a motion. I'll say it.
Okay, did we have a...
Madam Chair, I think the issue is there needs to be corrections.
Correct, that's what I was waiting on.
Yeah, I would make a motion if we adopt these...
You've got to make a motion first, and now he can have comments.
Along with the corrections.
Right. Okay.
The correction to the minutes, the question is the work session for February 26th, where it's got Mr. Govan being the one doing the invocation. It was Ms. Burry.
Can we get a second with the amendment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That. Reports and administrative presentations. We have our Hall of, Hartsfield Athletic Hall of Fame. Dr. Charlie Burry, I think you're going to speak to us on that.
Good evening, Dr. Newman, Chairperson Hassler, and school board members. My name's Charlie Burry. It is nice to be back in a familiar place again, briefly.[296.33][296.33](Laughter). I'm here representing a group of Hartsfield citizens who are endeavoring to establish a Hartsfield Athletic Hall of Fame. No such entity exists at this time, which is quite a notable absence, given the remarkable history of athletics in the Hartsfield community. Numerous state championships, college and professional athletes, highly successful coaches, even two Olympians. The current members of our Board of Directors are Brad Boob, Phil Gardner, Chip Giliard, Alvin Healy, Shannon Johnson, Wally Johnson, Donovan Loy, Arice Promas, Emery Waters, and myself. Our presentation tonight is for your information only, as we are not requesting any use of school district facilities, financing, or even any school district sanction. Naturally, the Hall of Fame will recognize and honor former athletes, coaches, administrators, and teams from Hartsfield High School and Butler High School, but also from Hartsfield area private schools, as well as other individuals who have contributed to the strong tradition of athletics in our community. We simply want you to be advised about our project, so that when we get our publicity going, to inform the community of their opportunities to submit nominations and otherwise support our efforts, you will have some knowledge of the Hartsfield Athletic Hall of Fame and what we intend it to be. Our mission statement concisely is to honor those who by outstanding achievement or service have made significant contributions to athletics in Hartsfield, our state, nation, and the world. We hope to inform and educate the general public as to the importance of athletic achievement and the values derived from participation in team and individual sports. We've had a lot of discussion, talked with people from other communities, and done quite a bit of research in the last few months. We plan to use the Florence Athletic Hall of Fame, which has existed since 2006, as a model for our organization. They've been highly successful. We saw no need to reinvent the wheel, so we're going to adopt much of their organizational structure, constitution, bylaws, and procedures, while tweaking those things to best fit our circumstances and purposes. We have quite a bit to do, the first of those things being to attain the blessing of the City of Hartsfield, Darner County Council, and the Darner County School District. Moving forward from that, we're going to take our time and do this in a manner befitting Hartsfield's proud athletic tradition. Our timeline at this point is to have the first Hartsfield Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony in the spring of 2025, and we will certainly want representatives from the Darner County School District to enjoy that occasion with us. Thank you for your time and attention. If there are questions or comments, I'd be glad to take those.
Anyone have any questions?
My only question, Charlie, is will it also include, not necessarily athletes, but persons who have been contributors or very heavily involved in athletics?
Yes, it will. Yes, it will. Other questions? Okay.
Dr. Burry, I applaud you for your efforts. Thank you all. I think it'll be a great addition to the Hartsfield.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
We wish you the best. We look forward to the first inaugural one.
Good.
All right, and we'll move on to our safety and security update. It's Mr. Schuler and Captain Nelson.
Captain Nelson.
Officer Nelson going to be here?
Yep.
Awesome.
All right, I want to welcome you. Good afternoon, Chair Hassler, school board members. Want to give you an update on safety and security. Obviously, we had that tragic event that took place in October.
Let's pick up just a tiny bit.
We had that event that took place in October. I'm sorry, I'm going to use my classroom voice.
Use your teacher's voice.
We had the incident that took place, a tragic event that took place in October. From there, we decided that we were going to send a survey out to all the principals, in which we requested information on needs in reference to door access, cameras, and other safety or security needs. From there, Captain Nelson and I kind of went and met with every one of the principals. I want to give you an update on what we've accomplished since that time. I'll start just by the grade bands, elementary, I'll do middle, and then high school, and then the programs afterwards. Elementary schools, update wise, every elementary schools have received two handheld weapon detectors for principals, administration, leadership to use as they need, see fit. All requested cameras has been assessed, considered, and ordered. That lead time has been pretty long, lengthy, to say the least. Door access for our Hartsfield Adult Ed between the two buildings, the solution for that now is that SRO from Thornwell has a master key and order for him to enter that door until we get the door access situated. Storefront is set for Carolina Elementary for spring break, and then we have an updated Raptor training that all schools kind of went through. With that, it gives access, it communicates through power schools, so it gives us information of all staff and students within the building. So imagine something happening, everyone has access on the phone, so if you're clearing out and you are able to account for whomever that's with you. So if we're in an office, I'll be able to, Mr. Morpheus, you know, Ms. Thompson, are with me. So Captain Nelson and Chad Poser, they've been training the schools as requested. Middle schools were fairly simple, for the most part. They each received additional weapons detectors, so they now pretty much have enough where they could run the weapons detectors daily if need be. There are a couple of blind spots that we have been establishing a plan to cover those spots, and again, they have had the Raptor training as well. On the high schools, additional weapons detector, Darlington High School, Hartsfield High School Mayo, and Lamar High School. Update for Mayo and Adult Ed, we are in the process of demolishing Brunson Gardens, so we are repurposing the fence to close in Adult Ed and Darlington and close in Mayo, repurposing that fence. Lamar High School has a storefront that will be also going up spring break, and we have a quote for Hartsfield High School campus audio for announcements, because they've been about. As far as the programs, both Adult Ed and Darlington and Hartsfield have weapons detectors now. Cameras have been delivered, and we're in the process of putting them up in those blind spots in Adult Ed and Darlington. There have been some part-time officers coming to Adult Ed in the mornings, and obviously they're there in the evenings. However, the SRO at DCIS and Thornwell knows the time in which they are starting, so they're tasked with going to check on them on a daily basis. I do have one extra, I think we brought up Rockington Elementary and the Carson Guard. We did contact DOT. They expressed that the distance is within regulations, and we've been kind of talking with the state transport police. The state told us to kind of make sure that we report that and have some conversations with them.
One thing that I would like to say, I would like to thank the board. I'm very competitive, so I went around to different districts and talked to them. Well, one thing I want to say about this district, we are ahead of the game with security. There's a lot more that I would like to happen, but everything that I wish for coming into this position, I've gotten it pretty much. So I want to say thank you to the board for doing the things that we needed, like the weapons detectors, like the handheld weapons detectors, the fencing, the additional cameras and different things. Of course, with the tragedy that happened, one thing about the board, I went there to meet with the faculty and staff, by the time I got there, y'all were already there, so thank you for doing that, showing unity amongst the board, and to let them know, hey, we're in here with you. And the fact that we went ahead and got metal detectors for both of those locations is outstanding. Also, we are one of the few districts that have had reunification drills. Not only did we have one, we have had five reunification drills, elementary schools, middle school, and high schools. So we have a plan, if something happens, to get the parents and the students back together again, so we're working hard as a district. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to work with law enforcement and to work with the students and staff of the district.
Anyone have any questions?
Is the storefront, is that like the, like where you've got to get it, you come into a door and you've got to wait for it to get to that guy?
Almost like before.
About like it on Kane, almost?
Yes.
Or like it, yeah, Brock.
Yeah, smaller version.
So how many, I was going to say, how many, on that note, what, how many more schools do we have that don't have that situation yet? There's a, I mean, do we, do, or maybe you don't, instead of trying to give me a number, do we have, do most of our schools have that situation? Which ones, are we, do we have it slated to make all of our schools have one of those?
Yes.
At some point?
Right. The only one I can think of right now, and I think we've looked at DCS, because once she go in, there's the huge library that she go in, but I think everyone else is covered.
I mean, Mayo is not. I mean, they have...
And what they did was move the principal and had the assistant principal, so they're making kind of temporary adjustments, and that's one of the things that me and Mr. Schuler talked about, getting that area looked at too. So we're discussing the schools that don't have it.
Even like Darlington High doesn't necessarily have that kind of situation either. I mean, I was just wondering, is that slated to eventually try to look at all of the schools?
Yes.
You can say no, it's okay.
No, no, we are consistently assessing, so we're definitely kind of taking the lead from the principals so constantly, asking them where your area is at.
And I heard that, that you're asking the principals, but are you training the principals to know, so that they know what to look for? You know what I mean? Like, they're not trained security professionals.
Trust me, these principals are on it, and whatever they think is top priority for the safety of their students, they're asking for it. And kind of like when they ask for it, I'm like that little nagging, nap behind Mr. Schuler's ear, please, 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 or not saying please. I should say please, though, but I'm constantly asking for new upgrades, and he goes to Dr. Newman, and it comes before y'all, and y'all find it to make it possible. So yes, thank you.
So what area do we need the most help in, the most critical area, or is it...
I don't know if you want me to answer that, or you want him. I like him answering. For me, on my wish list, that I want Hartsfield High, the sound system from Hartsfield High, and I know that's on our list. We got a quote, but I think that's something that we got to work, work on, getting things handled, the notifications of students in Hartsfield.
Call it the way it's spread out.
It's spread out, it's spread out, and I'm like that little nap behind his ear.
So what determines when we use the handheld weapons detectors?
So it's elementary schools that got, pretty much got the handheld.
So when are they using those?
It's up to the principal's discretion, and they use it, like if they have a big event and have parents coming in, they usually, they can use it then, that SROs are there, they can use it then, or if they have an after-school event, like they had the sneaker ball, this stuff like that, they can use it then, whenever the principal deems necessary. They don't want to, they're elementary schools, so you know, they, they use it when it's necessary, put it like that. They're using it as needed.
Fairly randomly.
Yes, randomly, yes.
Unrelated question, just curious, with the reason gun laws, everyone's been focused on that, I didn't even ask that question, but does that really, how does that change things? Again, the law means cannot still come on campus, but our parking lots are considered...
The campus.
Cannot.
Right.
We're still good.
No, 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 you can be in a parking lot with one.
Right.
So it does pose...
But that's, that's not part of our campus?
Hang on a second.
It's part of the campus. You can't, the only way that you can be with a gun on campus is kind of like if you've got to have permission from the superintendent to be on campus with a gun. Are we going to go out there and search cars and look and see who has one in the cars? We, law enforcement, we don't have that jurisdiction to, or legal right to do that. But say, for instance, if somebody has a concealed weapon permit, which is gone out the window now, they can come on campus with their weapon, but if law enforcement finds out about it, it's a whole different story, but if they get permission from the superintendent to have it in their vehicle...
Well, that's as confusing as muddy water right there.
It is, it really is.
We really have to wait for this to settle.
And that's why I said, I don't think you've got time to say it, but I would love to get
it. It just happened at the end of last week, and I will tell you that I was in superintendent's roundtable in Columbia when the governor approved that. There were two lawyers that were in there with us, and we had an hour conversation, because it's clear as mud right now, but there's a lot of change. And then, you know, I know that other people have been talking a good bit about this, but what I keep hearing everybody say, including law enforcement, is let's, let's let this settle to make sure we go through every scenario, every question that we have. For example, what we're talking about, parking lots versus buildings. There's a huge question about what is a campus? Is it parking lot? Is it inside the building? And so those are things that came up in our discussion. The other piece is too, is that it's 18-year-olds now, so that's potentially some of our students. So technically, it's not illegal for them to carry, but we have policies in place where there's consequences if you bring a weapon on campus. So there's the legal piece versus the policy piece, but, but a lot has changed, because it was 21, now it's 18. It was concealed weapon, now it's not. It was what are considered campuses. I think the attorney general has come out in some of his statements and made some comments that we're just trying to sift through.
I just bring that up, so that, obviously, I know it's going to be, it's a mess, because no one can give the same, no one gives the same answer twice. So once we've had time to digest it, and the state and everyone has had an opportunity, especially schools, and we come about a general consensus, I would love to make sure we are getting that out, so there's no confusion. Don't come with that, because that's going to type a lot of personnel.
Yes.
Anything from whatever type of weapon, et cetera.
Just to say, we got it posted on all of our schools, that you're not allowed to bring a weapon on any school campus, whether the parking lot or not.
Just want to make sure they understand the difference in the law and how it applies to schools.
And I want, no, I was just going to say, I'd like to make sure that our policy is as robust as it needs to be to support our law enforcement, to make sure that whatever we need to do to partner...
And I would say, in the in-between, we're going to err on the side of caution, on the in-between, like win and down, dump. So I'd much rather take action on what we think should not be going on than not taking action, right? So we're going to err on the side of caution, but again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of lawyer information that needs to be walked through.
Have we thought through this yet?
Yeah, I mean, because we didn't see, I'll be honest with you, superintendents didn't see this kind of thing. So when it dropped, it dropped quickly.
And there's no grace period, there's no, there's no...
It starts, it starts...
It's immediate. Yeah, it's not... Charles, can we let Charles, Charles?
One thing I would say, the school board association is also waiting on this, because the question becomes, what do you consider your property? The parking lot could be a part of your property. So they are, I think, they are, you know, they have some concerns, and attorneys have also started talking with the, about trying to figure out how to deal with some of that. So I think, I think you can look for some changes or some amendments or whatever down the road.
Now, why is there confusion as to where their parking lot is part of the school campus?
So this is something that came up from the attorney general, that I think we've always understood our campus includes the parking lot, but I think there is some question in the attorney's general, in the attorney general's office, on whether that's actually true or not, and violates Second Amendment.
Again, very, very confusing, because our property, we've spent numerous amounts of money enclosing those, maintaining them, anyways, that's our properties. I just, odd how they claim that or how they're going in that direction.
I will, you, SLED, they've already weighed in on also, and the last memo that the chief of SLED put out was that firearms are still prohibited in schools, your detention centers, anywhere, law enforcement offices, your federal and state buildings. So according to SLED, they're still prohibited on school grounds.
Yes.
And like I said, that's the way, that's the tack we're taking, we're going to err on the side of caution.
I just think as soon as you get something out, no one, they're not going to try to test you, look, get this out, and if it changes, then obviously it will change, but...
So I have, can I ask one more question, not about that in particular? So I was just curious, of all the things that you have on your list there that the principals requested, when do you expect, I mean, you said cameras are coming in slow, you're waiting on some fencing stuff, like when do you expect to have most of that completed? I mean, I know it's a rolling process, but...
Yeah, we're hoping to be finished by the end of the school year, just to be upfront with you, because I mean, we have to kind of plan and get those cameras in and like install, so that's a whole other piece too.
But it looks like you should be able to do it in the next few months.
How many years are we in our re-gaming project?
Well, this is the second year, but if you remember, we...
I thought we both liked just to go do this.
But we delayed it a little bit, because we just got funded for the state. So a little while back, it was in one of my updates, but the money had some safety and security grant money that was out there, and we wound up getting a million dollars to be able to put towards that project. And so while we were in that process of applying for it and getting approved, so we're still definitely moving forward, and it'll be easier to do now, because we're going to do it at one time, but now we have almost half of it grant money used to start in that process.
So I really didn't understand that timeline wise. So where are we right now in, I mean, are we, is that something like we're actively working on all the time?
We just started as far as the routine, so we have like certain schools kind of lined up.
Right, you've got a black priority.
Yes.
And you're working through that.
Yes.
The only thing I would say, it's not a question or anything, but what you brought with the reunification drills, for me being able to witness it, you know, as a parent and a board member, I have to commend you, y'all, and all the staff that takes place in it. You know, it followed through flawlessly, and it's like a must remember to y'all, so good job on that part.
Just one other comment, while we, because I really feel like I need to make this statement. Firearms and weapons are not allowed on school district property, and we believe school district property is our parking lot, so the public needs to know, all of our campuses, including parking lots, you are not allowed to bring a firearm on, so... Yes, athletic venues, anything that is part of school district property, that is our stance at this point. Just want to make sure I clear that up.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much, appreciate it. All right, our budget reports and federal funds report. Anybody have any questions related to those?
Allergies, sorry.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
I do.
Okay.
I'm trying to speak, but on your dancer monies, budget, and then year-to-date expenses, on just three of the larger ones, any update as far as, I think, two and a half million over one person of education technology, and then one on another activities, and three on addressing learning. Where are we on that? This is it, the year, right?
Where are we on that? This is it, the year, right? So timelines.
We just amended it. So we've got it tight. I mean, we're gonna spend it.
Oh, I figured. I just wondered, well, we've heard that a little time exactly where.
I mean, this is, this is the latest. This was as of the end of January.
And this was, this was where we had already previously allocated and it just hadn't been spent. So it's not like we're just scrambling to look. It's got.
It's been out, yeah, we have a plan and we have to go by that plan. And we've amended the plan to follow what, where we've got that money allocated. If we get closer to June and something falls off, then we'll amend it again and reallocate it. But we've been checking it monthly.
And so, Jake, to your point, you are correct. There's buckets in that plan that we had to submit. And then over time, you know, if we've not spent as much money, so for example, after-school programs. You know, we just started up our after-school programs again for the spring. We have X amount allocated to those. If we don't spend all that money, if we don't have as many students that participate in that, we are able to reallocate that money later on this summer to take care of that. So, you know, technically it goes through September of this year. So, yeah, so.
Really, we have, now, we want to try to get all that taken care of by July first, but we have through September for any of those pots that we need to reallocate. So it says there's only one under addressing learning laws, and that's basically your employees.
Yes.
So that will expire three minutes from the开始 and then the year, but.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. And we've done our projections based on when they're scheduled to end. And we use the prior year summer numbers to allocate. We've been very conservative. So we've got it. Ms. Blackman and I keep doing, spending a lot of time looking at those numbers. So we were.
Any other questions? All right. Moving on to Action News. Dr. Newman, if you'll lead us off with our guaranteed maximum price or GMP for our new Darlington Elementary School.
We're just agenda.
I'm so sorry.
It's all correct.
Jumped right over.
That's all right. Chair Hassler, members of the board, members of our audience, this is where we talk about our strategic plan, goal areas, and highlight what some of our schools are doing. Again, of course, our mission statement is to educate, empower, and prepare all for an ever-changing world. And that starts with student success. So just a couple of examples. Bay Road, each week they take a team around to the classrooms to celebrate their Den Buck winners. Students get to dance. The admin team and others put on their dancing shoes and dance with the winning classes. This is all based on behavior as well as academic achievement. From Carolina, students from each grade level earning the most trophies in Exact Path Reading, Language Arts, and Exact Path received a wacky pack from Sonic. So a little bit of incentives there for, again, academic achievement. Darlington Middle School, their exceptional education students went on a field trip to the rodeo. And then they also had map cookout incentives. Hartsfield High School, students who earned a C or better were on the EOCs, were entered into drawings for free prom tickets, parking passes, sports passes, and school store coupons. Hartsfield Middle School, they had their first Sweetheart Ball, and it was a success. Success, I can vouch for that because I drove by there and could not figure out what was going on on Friday night. But they had over three hundred students that participated. And everybody said, very well attended and behaved. Lamar High School, their Institute of Biomedical Innovation is taking a field trip to the Medical University of South Carolina in Charleston. They did that in February. Mayo, on January twenty-seventh, Mayo, Phoenix Forge, one-four-nine-one-four robotics team competed in the first tech challenge at Fort Dorchester High School in North Charleston. The Phoenix Forge completed day one as the number one team and left the event as the grand champion alliance. So good job Mayo on that, robotics. And then we also had St. John's Elementary School. Students were challenged to report to the principal their predictions and outcome of Groundhog Day. But they did this through math, reading, and writing. So again, neat examples of student success. Staff excellence. Brockington Elementary, faculty and staff were treated, excuse me, bus drivers were treated with gift certificates for Bus Driver Appreciation Week. DCIT, they had, and some of our high schools had their business, marketing, finance, IT teachers attend the state convention in Myrtle Beach. Darlington Virtual Academy, County Virtual Academy, Mrs. Carla Jefferson was a presenter at the Digital Learning Annual Conference. Darlington Middle School, they had Science Night along with their Black History Month program. Lots of our schools, by the way, had their Black History Month programs all across the district. Great, great programs. Hartsfield Middle had Super Bowl Friday where staff brought their favorite soups and tailgate food. Lamar High School, again, their faculty participated in district learning rounds, and the problem, practice was questioning that they were focused on. North Hartsfield, they, this is actually kind of a community engagement piece, but because the community, they were able to surprise sixty-two students with a bookshop experience. And so the community showed up, spent time with the kids, read with them, and helped them pick out books, but also donated the books to the students. Again, Pate Elementary, they had their Pate local vocals who we all experienced at the Hall of Fame. They actually performed for a Black History performance with the school. And Southside, they had a Better Than Therapy Faculty/Staff Book Club. So they had faculty and staff meet together and decide on a book to read together. And they met at a local restaurant to discuss it and fellowship. And community engagement, you heard a little bit that I talked about, but again, Bay Road was partnering with Kellytown Baptist Church for Good News Club. Carolina talked about they had their Second Annual Family Bingo Night with over two hundred and twenty participants. Shout out to Hartsfield Middle School for letting them use the cafeteria. The Darlington County Virtual Academy Junior Beta Club traveled to local nursing homes for community service projects. Darlington High School lavender ladies and Falcon Young Men worked with the community partners to complete CPR training. JL Kane Elementary had Rollin' with the Dads, which was a breakfast event open to all fathers and father figures. And also, they had their Career Week where parents signed up to share with small groups about their careers. Lamar Spalding had Love Your Neighbor Orange Frog Challenge where the Orange Frog Committee packed four hundred and thirty weekend food bags for students across the district that are in need of food. And again, the North Hartsfield worked with the Hartsfield, the American Heart Association. And they helped come in and educate those folks. And Carolina Pines was also part of that as far as the presentations that they had. And then, of course, resources. We had Bay Road purchase flash cards for parents with their Title I monies. Lamar Spalding purchased for second grade students to review everything they learned about shapes by building two-D and three-D shapes out of marshmallows and toothpicks. It's a good use of resources. And Mayo, of course, their cafeteria restroom additions were just completed. So they now have six girls and six boys bathrooms. And that went from two apiece. And St. John's, of course, did Humane Society Food Drive that they worked with and used their Title I funds to order materials for classrooms for Mathemab strategy. So again, the four goal areas for the strategic plan, that was for the month of February.
All right. Now you won't keep talking about that guaranteed.
I can. I'm gonna keep rolling.
All right.
I'm gonna keep rolling here. So, so again, Chair Hassler, members of our board and for our audience. We are finally at the point of being able to talk about our set price for the new Darlington Elementary School. The Darlington Elementary, area elementary school that combines St. John's Elementary School and Rosenwald Elementary School. And of course, the board approved the early site package at the last board meeting. And if you remember, that was for eight point eight million dollars to take care of all of the site work, to get the building pad ready as well as getting roads and everything cut into the site. And the next part of this process that we're doing, which is called CM at Risk, Construction Management at Risk is what this is called. The next phase is to get the actual building price. And so this is where we receive the cost that it's gonna take to build the actual school building. And so we have members from EdCon with us. Owen Cease is here from EdCon, and of course, Joel Carter for Jumper Carter Cease. They're our design firm and our construction firm that worked together to get us to this point. Again, that's one of the different parts of doing Construction Management at Risk is those two work together before we go out for pricing. And so we receive the pricing back in. And so for the construction of the actual building, the guaranteed maximum price. Again, this process is, there's a guaranteed maximum price. There is no change orders involved. It can not be any more than this price that we are saying, regardless of what happens with pricing between now and completion. And we know that that has, prices have escalated over the past few years. But the guaranteed maximum price for constructing the building is twenty-nine million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. This is a one hundred thousand, five hundred square foot building. And when you add the early site package in, the eight point eight, actually it was eight million, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. When you add those two together, it is thirty-eight million, six hundred and forty-seven thousand. And then the only other costs are furniture fixture and architectural and engineering fees. Those are an additional two million, nine hundred, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for a total package of forty-one million, five hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so, again, the, we wish that prices had not escalated over the past few years like they have. But I think if anybody's been to the grocery store even recently or to the gas pump, we all know what we're dealing with with prices. But the good news is, is that we still have the money to pay for this in our, what I call our capital savings account. And so we are able to pay for this school out of our capital fund through money that we have saved over the past few years that is specific for buildings. That money is specifically geared towards buildings. And so there is no extra tax burden to the taxpayers. This is being funded all internally. And so we are fortunate that we are able to, again, utilize the money that we have, even though the prices have risen a little bit on us, that we're still able to pay for this. And we are excited about getting started. Again, we have both of our construction firm here with us and our architects that are here to answer questions as well. If there are any questions that the board has for myself or for the design team or construction team.
What was the times per, what?
One hundred thousand, five hundred.
Because I compared it to Kane.
Kane was about.
You don't want to compare it to Kane.
Yeah, Kane was smaller. Kane was about.
I thought it was eighty thousand.
Eighty-two. Yeah, Kane was rated eighty-two. And one of the biggest changes for this, first of all, there's more students in it. So, you know, we're planning on opening with six hundred and thirty students. So there's about a hundred and thirty more students that we had planned on opening with versus Kane. And then also, there's the self-contained special needs classrooms that are unique to St. John's that Kane does not have. And so we house several self-contained classrooms that students from across the county come to St. John's for. So that's pretty much the difference in square footage. We have some STEM STEAM areas that we've also designed in, so programmatically. We're gonna have some STEM STEAM opportunities for all the students in that building. But the biggest change in square footage is the number of students and the self-contained special needs classrooms.
Anybody else with any other questions? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the GMP as presented?
No, bro. I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carries.
We will, we had the groundbreaking recently and that we are moving forward. So it's exciting. I'm gonna leave it right with you there as you update us about the rest of the district.
Okay. So for the superintendent's update, just had a couple items on my list. We was glad to be able to attend the boys' basketball state championship in Florence. Unfortunately, our Darlington High School Falcons fell a little short, but they were state runners-up. So congratulations to the boys' Darlington High School basketball team for their season and for being state runners-up. We also have our one hundred and thirty-fifth day counts that are coming up. The third quarter is about to end. That's the one hundred and thirty-fifth day mark. So middle of March, we will be ending third. In fact, we have a PD day on the fifteenth this coming Friday. That is the end of the third quarter. And of course, the start of the last quarter of the school year. So the end of the year is coming quickly. Remember, the last month of the school year, the last May, is set aside for state assessments. So that's a requirement from the State Department is the last four weeks must be held back for state testing. So, and if you add in the next thing on my list, which is spring break's actually coming up, April first through the fifth. Easter's early this year. And so spring break is early. And so if you factor in spring break and you factor in the last four weeks of May, you know, of the school year, which is pretty much May, being for testing, it is coming quickly, the end of the school year is. So again, I think in a positive way, I think it's, again, been a really good second semester, third quarter. And that our principals, that thank you principals in the audience, they've really got our kids focused on task. And our teachers especially are gearing towards the end of the school and not only assessments, but also the award ceremonies and everything else that'll be going on, graduation. All those things are coming up soon. Also wanted to remind everybody about the communications audit that is taking place. I think Audrey has put a flyer in every conceivable location that a flyer can be put. So you can scan it and take the survey for the communications audit. Again, we've done a good job. Audrey's done a great job as far as messaging and putting all the information out there. Getting feedback on how we can communicate better with our stakeholders, but also internally in our district, externally in our district. And then, since the last board meeting we had, we actually had our key to career internship signing day. And so that was a great event. We had eighty-six students that signed up for paid internships this semester. That's the largest by far that we've had. And we had a great, you know, program that acknowledged those folks. But we also had fifty-eight of our businesses in Darlington County that those students are working in this semester. So it was great to have a lot of our businesses there for signing day. We treat this just like, you know, when. We treat this just like, you know, when athletics have signing days. We think this is a special deal for our students that are getting a chance to learn about careers, but also get paid to, to learn about a career that they may be doing when they graduate high school. And so it was great to have that. And, you know, piggybacking on that, our, our eighth grade ascend program for second semester, we have a hundred and fifty students that are out in that. That's, again, once a month, nine to twelve on the day that they go out, but it's career exploration. And we have nine businesses, nine of our partners, that are taking groups of fifteen students for these dates, and they're giving them tours of their businesses and explaining the careers that are available there. Then they're also doing hands-on projects with our students that relate to the businesses. And then, of course, last but not least, they're feeding them lunch, which for eighth graders is a really big deal. So, again, we're glad again to have a hundred and fifty of our students out there this semester for that. And that's everything that I have on my superintendent's update.
Got one question. How much, is there any difference, or have you been able to assess if there's a difference between the forty-five day and one hundred and thirty-fifth day?
Well, we got to wait for the hundred and thirty-fifth count, we'll get that.
Just do it.
Yeah, that's right, we won't get that until it's Friday. That's when the cutoff is. So, you know, I, I, I hope it shows we have more than what we had on the forty-fifth.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what our, our hope would be, that we've had some more people coming into the district. But yeah, we'll have those numbers for the board. Could be by the work session, no later than the next board meeting for sure.
All right, thank you there, we'll move on to board member. Mr. Govan, since you were already gone, I want to let you start us out.
Nothing bad, right? Mr. Jeffords.
Mr. Schuler, how are y'all coming on the sales for Lamar Smart Elementary?
Say that again?
The sales that put up on the playground.
We received a quote last week, so we, we're having some conversations with Williams, you talking about the shades, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, but they already had this, they already paid for the sales, I think, I understand.
No, no, I found out that they did.
They got the money raised last year.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're in process, yes.
We'll make sure, all right. I get questions all the time about that. About vacancies, how are we?
Well, this is the one meeting of the year where I do not, I cannot have a concrete number for you, but I can tell you this, because everything's so fluid, it's probably changed since we came in here today. But there's two components that are coming together for us, so the, bringing the class sizes back to pre-COVID numbers that eliminated vacancies, and the loss of effort, Esther Fund is going to free up people to fill what vacancies we do have. So I'm not making any promises that I can't keep, but we are, I, I probably, it looks like starting twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five, we're going to be in the best shape we've been in recent memory. So we're, we're in really good shape there because of those two components that are coming together like, like a perfect storm. Contracts will go out the day after spring break, they'll come back May tenth, and then one of the shore.
Okay. Another thing, looks like it's more and more pressure to try to get students from our public schools. I just want to make sure we're doing everything we can on PR to make sure people know we have good schools, we need to be promoting that. We can't sit back and wait on them, we got to go out there and be, you know, at the forefront and make it happen, so people realize that what we do have is great. We've got great teachers, we've got good schools, great schools, and let's make sure people realize that and, and put that out there, and I know you will. If we need billboards or whatever money we need to spend for it, we need to do it. Okay?
Ms. Thompson?
Um, let's see, so thank you to Captain Nelson and to Mr. Schuler for your presentation today, and all your efforts to make our schools safer. I've told you guys before, it, it's personal being a parent in the district and, and spending a lot of time in our schools over the years. So, thank you for your efforts, keep it up, don't be shy if you see a need to bring it to the board. Don't assume anything about what we will or will not fund, bring it to us so we can be And so, yes, keep that, keep up the good work there. Love hearing about all the business, the stuff going on in business, with businesses. I went to the internship signing, that was a lot of fun, a different kind of event than, you know, we're so used to giving out awards for academics, for grades, right? But this is a whole nother, and I love it, I love that we're shifting some focus to, toward our businesses and toward bringing our kids back to Darlington County after college, or providing them with opportunities in Darlington County without having to go to college. Love the ascend program, just really, really can't say enough about the partnerships we're doing with our businesses. And I really, everything I've done, I've seen that you're working on is, has been really great, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think it's good for our community, for our economy, for our students, so let's keep that going. Uh, let's see. Audrey, thank you for, for promoting the communications audit. I think that your openness to learning from that and for process improvement, how to be better, I mean, we say it, we've said it so many times, and you just said it again, you know, we have a great school district that we need to promote our wins, to promote the good things that are going on, let the community know, and engage more with our community. So I hope we can learn some things from this audit, they make us even better. So thank you for your openness to that. And the last thing was just fun, I went, Audrey and I were at the Darlington High School Black History Program that they put on last week, and that was awesome. It was so much fun, and they just did a fabulous job, and really enjoyed it, and so much talent amongst our students and our, our faculty and staff. There were a couple of teachers that were amazing singers, and some, and students as well, so really fun to go to that, so, so thank you for having me, and congratulations on a great program to Darlington High School.
Okay, let's stop there.
Um, just, Audrey seems to be on the hot spot tonight. With her survey, I, I took the survey, I, I think we communicate very well. I mean, I hope that what you get back, you always improve for improvement, but it shouldn't show much. But while you're talking, everyone seems to be talking on the marketing side of this thing, and we keep saying, okay, is our county losing population? Yeah, Dr. Newman and I had the conversation, but it's kind of that and people's expectations, what they think that they're getting or not getting. So it goes back to, a lot of it is misunderstanding, I think. When I talk to parents, they all say comments, you know, those that left, why, why, why did you leave? I mean, what is it? And the answers they gave me, I was just like, that's just not true. I mean, I'm like, well, what are you getting that I'm not? So I don't know if we do this, but I'd like to see if we could try or either do a better job. When a student leaves the district, someone's trying to make that contact, and obviously the principal's the best because they know the student and the family best, why did you leave? It's kind of an exit interview type thing. I mean, if it's on decent terms, I wouldn't have think, I think very rarely we ever have anyone that leaves because of something wrong with the district, it's just what they think they might get elsewhere that's better. Again, I, I feel like in a lot of the cases where I hear these parents, it's just not true, I know the facts. So I don't know that, when you market ourselves, maybe we put out there the things that we're hearing, that I'm hearing they're saying they're leaving for, and we know that's not true, put it out there, the, not the opposite, but the answer, if that makes sense. So they'll say, well, you know, that's just not true, and they're looking, again, I don't know if I'm communicating well what I want to say, but I just would like to see us do a better job of talking to those parents that are no longer with us, most recent, obviously, but even if we could go back a few months, four, six months for that matter. Again, we just want to know why, what, what is it? Talk to us, want to better ourselves. And then if we can, you know, we're sitting there and argue, but if we could, not to them, but come back out, that helps our marketing, well, they said this, well, we know that's not true, well, then we need to put that information out there so they understood that that's not true, if that makes sense. So I guess better targeting based on information.
Ms. Kelly?
Um, so I, I'd like to congratulate the Darlington Boys Basketball Team, and also the Girls Basketball Team. They fell short in lower state, and the Boys, of course, you know, came a little bit short for state, but we were there pulling for them so hard, and I'm just excited to see some, you know, positive reasons for both of those teams, so keep up the good work, always next year, got high expectations.
Mr. Reddick?
Same thing as you, Ms. Kelly said, you have a great job to, you know, Darlington High, Lady Falcons and Falcons. Um, yeah, I know Saturday, they, they gave their all.
Yeah, they did.
They did, they did a good job out there. Other than that, good.
Ms. Gold?
First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Newman, and Ms. Hessler, for sending such a heartfelt letter to Rosenwald Lumina Association. That was a very thoughtful letter that you all sent, and that was a very thoughtful response that you all received. So I'm glad that that communication is taking place at this time. I had the opportunity to go to some of the Black History programs, I'm sorry I couldn't make them all, but I did go to Middle Magna School and Darlington High and DCIS. Even though each program was different, all of them was magnificent. I thank the principals, the teachers, and everybody that gave the children the platform that they could exercise their talent. There are some very talented young people in the Darlington County School District, not just academically, but musically inclined. So they gave the children the opportunity to have a holistic approach about different things. They were happy, they were tap dancing, they was doing the swing back in the twenties. I said, oh my God, and I just enjoyed it, because it brought back memories, and I said, you know, it's real history. And I thank all the principals, I thank all the teachers who was involved in those productions, because they were productions. It wasn't just somebody's stuff, they were productions. And I know a lot of time and effort went into what they were doing. And the costumes that they had were beautiful, you know, for that time, and, and I thank you all who participated in that endeavor for the children. I, I again congratulate the Falcons, you know, they, they played, they played their heart out. Wanda and Leanna and I, we were cheerleaders, we were hollering all out the window, we just hollered, and we were there, and we were their true fans, we were just cheerleading. That, now our cheerleading skills came back, and we was really, we was really cheering for our, our boys to win, but still, they are still the Lord's State Champions, they still our champion, they still our winners, and like Leanna said, there's always next year, there's always next year. And I also, I was listening to all the good things that is, that this, that the whole district is doing. These kids are doing some magnificent things, and they're doing some great things, not, you know, in all the district. And I was just really glad to hear that on tonight. I really was heartfelt when I was, when I was listening to everything that was going on. I'm looking forward to the new school, this will be the first school that I, that my name will be on. And I'm proud, this is, this is the first school under my administration when I am here, and I thank God for all the children and all the excitement that's going on, and that's going to be a beautiful school. And I hope that, you know, everybody is just elated about moving and doing great things for this district. So I don't think I have anything else to say, Dr. Newman, I'm feeling the best tonight, but I'm here.
Thank you, Ms. Gold. I just have a few things. It's Dr. Newman, as you said, that y'all are wrapping up, you know, end of school year events are going to be coming, please remember to invite the board members to these events. I think, you know, before COVID, we, we used to get a lot of invitations, and, and I truly enjoy celebrating all of our different departments, our maintenance department, our cafeteria workers, I mean, please, please don't forget us on the invitation list on that, because I think we, we may not be able to attend all of them, but I think, you know, you, you should be able to get some board members at all of those. I also attended with Mr. Morpheus the State of Education in Darlington County breakfast that occurred at, at Heartland Country Club last week, where Dr. Newman presented, and it was a very, very, very good presentation. He, I, I would like to see him can that speech and take it around, because I think it did a very good job of talking about our workforce development and all the different programs that we have that are moving towards that workforce development. I mean, we've got them starting in the middle school, you know, our key to careers, and it, it goes on. So I think that was, it just highlighted everything that we are doing. A lot of times, I think we get that question, you know, what are we doing for workforce development? Well, we're actually doing a lot, and I just don't know that we're getting the credit that we deserve for that. So Dr. Newman, thank you for that, that program, and I hope you take it on the road. Kind of to bounce off of what Warren and Jamie both have said about our marketing, I've got a very, very big concern with some legislation that's coming out of Columbia, and it concerns our voucher programs, where in particular, I think, I mean, I think we're going to, the doors now look like they have just been thrown open, and voucher money is going to be going out the door without accountability. And that disturbs me greatly. We spend hours, our staff spends hours, our district office people spend hours on accountability, and to, to just let that happen, and this, this money go out to schools without any accountability, I think is a, a true disservice to the taxpayers. I, I'm still struggling with how you're going to hold our public schools accountable, because we're funded through public funds, but we're not holding the private schools that are going to be taking public funds accountable. And I think as a school board member, it's incumbent upon us to, to just state our displeasure with that, and I, and I just think it, it's, it's, it sets up a very, very dangerous precedent moving forward, especially as it relates to the future of public schools. So that's my piece on that, I don't think, I'm not in favor, but I don't support it, and I think it's, it's a lot of inequity. You can't hold one accountable because of public funds and not the other. So that's kind of what I have to say on that one. So anyway, we'll move on to personnel actions, and we have some personnel actions there we need a motion to approve.
Do we have any discussion?
Because I have a couple questions. This seems like a very long list, is this, how is this related to what we got coming in March? I mean, I know it's, it wasn't everyone, but I was kind of...
It's the start.
I was questioning why we, we kind of, are, are we starting a rolling process of...
Yeah, it's the start. So a lot of those are, for example, some of our letter of agreement, you know, folks where they may retire, but then they're rehired to come back with us. And each year, they have to be, you know...
So thus specific, I mean, I saw a lot of that, so that was specifically what most of that was, was related to?
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, it was, it was a long list, so I was kind of just questioning...
And also, the, the principals have been meeting with Mr. Miller and his group, turning in all their contract information. So, you know, the, the big contract push will be at the special call that we do, that's when we'll bring all of the teacher contracts. But a lot of what you saw on that is our retirees that are continuing the workforce, we have to renew them every year.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can we get a motion for executive session?
Yes, ma'am, here immediately, moving to executive session to discuss personnel matters and contractual matters.
I get a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed, we'll move into executive sessions. Opposed, we'll move into executive sessions.
Mr. Jeffords seconded it and that motion carried. No actions were taken, no votes were taken, and we will kind of take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Did you tell us if it's time or just today?
It's all day.
It's all day.
It's an all day thing.
Got you all day Jane.
Yep.